All right, I guess we'll call the meeting to order. It is 5:38 PM. I guess we'll stand and recite the pledge of allegiance as we do with any and all of our meetings.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So off to, I guess we'll do, would you like to do roll call, ma'am?
Guillermo Garcia. Dr. Oscar Burdron.
Present.
Lisa Paul.
Present.
Sylvia Bruni. Alfonso de la Garza.
Present.
Dr. James Cortez.
Present.
Sandra Ochelatina.
Present.
We have, we have a core. Okay. Would any of you like to motion to, I guess first we'll ask for general citizens' comments? Anyone here to make a citizen's comment has three minutes to make their, three minutes to, to, to comment on this agenda.
Amanda Sosa, what it is.
Sir, we were going to present for purposes of public readings.
Okay, so then it wouldn't be, yes, so that would be more for Roman numeral four. The actual, the actual hearing, so doesn't look like there's anyone present for public comments? Can we move on to the next thing? Excellent, all right, approval of the minutes? One of you all motioned to approve the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved. Now, why we're all here, Roman numeral four, discussion with possible action on the following, the appointment of a chairperson who wishes to nominate one of their colleagues as the chairperson.
I nominate Lisa Paul.
Does Ms. Paul accept the nomination?
For purposes of this meeting, I'll, I'll accept it. For, yeah, on, it's just for the purposes of this meeting, correct? Or is it, is it?
To appoint.
Oh, it's for, okay, for the whole thing? Oh, okay, I'll accept.
You'll accept? Okay, is there a second?
Unless there's another nomination.
Is there another one? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Paul. All right. Now, we also have to have a vice chairperson. Is there any nominations for a vice chairperson?
I nominate Dr.
Mr. Burdron? Do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Excellent, is there a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Burdron. Vice chair, fantastic. Okay, off to B, it's discussion with possible action on the ethics complaint submitted to the city attorney's office by Amanda Lizeth Sosa Paredes and Daniel Luis Paredes in regards to possible violations of sections 2.01B, section 2.014, section 2.015, section 2.018A1 or A2, and section 2.019 of the Ethics Code by David J. Paredes. So.
Sorry, one question, before we get started, would it be appropriate to, to, if there was a motion, to convene in closed session to get legal advice from the first assistant regarding, I guess, you know, issues related, legal issues or get legal counsel regarding this before we hear the complaint? So that we may get legal counsel regarding the rules and ask any questions about how the rules, you know, would apply?
If that is your motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes, I agree I do.
Just for the record, the motion is to convene in, for executive session, to discuss certain legal procedures and matters on this issue, correct?
Right, pursuant to the Texas Government Code, section 551.071, to seek legal counsel.
Okay, that sounds fine, let's reconvene.
Okay, the time is 5:54, and we are back in session, and if we could let the record reflect that we left to go into executive session at 5:43, I'm sorry, I'm new, so I forgot to announce the time. So we are back on the record, and so we may proceed. Okay, so, and I believe you had already called the item.
Yes, I had already, already called the item, so now that I, now that we've called the item, we can allow public comment on this, on this agenda item, where the individual will be limited to three minutes, unless one of the commissioners is allowed to grant an additional three minutes per representative, per commissioner. So he would have a grand total of?
Fifteen.
How many minutes?
Fifteen.
Fifteen minutes, if you all were to give all of your time. Okay, so.
May I approach?
Yes.
So, my name is George Altgilt, I'm representing Luis Paredes and his wife Amanda Paredes. They co-own this business together, and Mrs. Paredes would also like to address you all. So if you were considering rationing your time, please keep in mind that she too would like to tell her, her piece as it relates to this incident. In the interest of time, I'm going to try to be quick, but I do want to also be thorough in order to respect the process and frankly, the, the gravity of the situation. So, our complaint, the basis of our complaint is a internal City of Laredo Human Resources investigation. And in that investigation, they determined that the city cemetery's director, supervisor, David Paredes, was utilizing his official position for personal gain. And he also, he owned a monument company, my clients own a monument company, they're direct competitors. And if you dealt with his company, you got preferential treatment, usually meaning that your tombstone could be installed within 30 days. If you, anybody else had to get, you know, 120 days out minimum, you know, basically, what he was designing was a scheme where you were funneled directly to him, and he was using his office there at the cemetery to, you know, snipe bereaved families, you know, they were coming in in these very frankly, fragile, you know, situations, the loss of a loved one, and he was talking about city plots that you could acquire, and oh, by the way, you know, call this monument company, and he was thinly disguising the monument company as being owned by some other company and that it wasn't his, but thankfully, due to the diligence of your city's HR department and their thorough investigation, they were able to drill down and discover what a ruse that, that in fact was. It was a ruse. And what they also discovered, and primarily my client's complaint is the entirety of the internal investigation performed by Ms. Zulema Ortiz, Ms. Teniente participated in it, she signed off on it. And Ms. Daniela Vera as well participated in the investigation. And ultimately, there's two Paredes's, right, my client Paredes, Luis Paredes, and then there's his, interestingly, his uncle, David Paredes, who is this antagonist in this story, if you will. David, I'm going to use him by his first name so we don't confuse David for Luis. David ends up, even after we filed our, our complaint, ends up keeping his job and business as usual, no problem, for months and months and months and months and months. Remember, we filed this, my client brought forward her complaint in September of 2023. During the investigation, he was called in, he was interviewed, as were other workers there, as was his administrative assistant, as was, though not listed, you know, his, his department director that he answered to, and it was determined that in fact, he was using his official position for personal gain. Recommendations were made by Ms. Ortiz that, and I'm going to quote here from the report, "Our final recommendation is for the immediate termination of David Paredes for violating the municipal city service rules and regulations and the code of ethics policy indicated below." And she, she lists them all on page seven, I'm not going to eat up my time, but basically misconduct in the workplace, having outside employment that interferes with the employee's work performance, performing outside employment on city time. And it, and then, you know, to my client's credit, you know, she submitted several open records requests to help the city, assist the city, in an investigation that frankly, they should have just been doing all on their own, but, you know, being, being the fierce competitor that, that my client is, but competing for a level playing field, not competing for some sort of special treatment. But in her open records request, it's discovered several purchase orders, 3, 2, I'm sorry, 3, 5, 6, 4, 5, 4 in particular, which is the purchase of monuments, wherein the City of Laredo paid to Laredo Monument. One purchase was $45,000, another one, that was for a guardian angel, another one for $49,000. Now, what's significant about those numbers? Yeah, it's a lot of money, but it's also right underneath that $50,000 benchmark where you need to go out for competitive bidding, bidding, right? So if you come in under 50, the purchasing department, whose director interestingly is no longer with the city, and, and the supervisor, the, the director of the department can just sign off on it. And so you've got these, just, you know, you know, $17,500, you know, this was at the time of the filing of, of the original complaint, so, you know, big ticket items, and this is just some of them, I'm not going to, this, these are just the relevant ones at the time of the city's own internal HR report, which by the way, has a, has a date of October 16th. To the city's credit, and I'm one of the biggest critics of the city.
So sorry, your, your three minutes is up, is there anyone that would like to yield more time to Mr. Altgilt?
I'll yield my time to Mr. Altgilt.
Thank you, ma'am. To, to the, to the city's credit, so the complaint gets filed September 23rd. This, this investigation is wrapped up by October 16th. I mean, they grab it, they turn it around, and it's been sitting in the, you know, city manager's third floor somewhere, you know, west wing for quite some time, and it, and, and, and I get it, part of it, you know, we're, you know, we're just now here today to discuss this, right? If we wanted to, and that's partly on me, I, there was some scheduling conflicts, I mean, to be fair, but the, it, it wasn't until just recently that this case gets docketed for your review that David Paredes ultimately resigns from, from the city. I've been told, and, and, you know, we don't need to start patting ourselves on the back just yet, but he was replaced by a Mr. Sayadvedra, who apparently is, is really doing a good job, going out of his way, make sure there aren't, there isn't any, you know, you know, malfeasance happening there, but there was a competitive bid that went out for some monuments, and my client bid on those, and bid extra super low, just to like, you know, just to see if she could get her foot in the door, and of course, we didn't win that bid, Laredo Monument, David Paredes won that bid. So he's still in business with the city, mind you. And, and, and I wanted to mention that, you know, this is sat, this, this investigation has sat on the west wing of the third floor since October of 2023, and not much was done. And, and that, I mean, I think that should be concerning for all of us. The other thing that Ms. Zulema Ortiz recommended, quote, "We are recommending that this investigation be forwarded to a local law enforcement agency for an investigation of any possible criminal offenses associated," and to the best of our knowledge, that has not occurred. And, and if, when you, when you go through the amount of evidence that was provided to her and that she reviewed in her determination, you know, so my client, her husband were interviewed, Mr. David Paredes's former employee, Alberto Beto Guzman was interviewed, and he, he was like, yeah, I mean, I worked for him for years leading up to this complaint, and he at all times was present on city cemetery property, wearing his city cemetery shirt while on duty, giving me directives as it related to the execution of matters relating to his private personal company. And so Ms. Ortiz took that into consideration, and then she interviewed city cemetery building maintenance worker, Hector Valderas, Jose Monroy, who's a groundskeeper, another Diana Gomez, who's the right hand of David Paredes, the, the supervisor, interviewed, of course, David Paredes, who's notably not present today. Just for the record, I'd like to point that out, he's not here to answer. Maybe he'll come at this, you know, at the, the next hearing, but also Tanya Herrera, the purchasing buyer for the city as well. And so originally, my client reached out to Assistant City Manager Steve Landin with this report of, of, you know, conflict of interest, the investigation ensued, pictures of text messages between David and his former employer, employee, Mr. Guzman, audio recordings, GPS of City of Laredo trucks that would leave the city cemetery, go to his Laredo Monument company, I mean, Ms. Ortiz, I mean, God bless her to come forward, and this isn't the only, this isn't the first time she's come forward, she's come forward on other matters where, in case her name pops up again, I want to say that she's one of my heroes, because so few people in the city ever come forward and speak up, and she does, she's one of them, she doesn't, she's like, fire me. I, she, she was here, right here, one time, I saw her myself, challenging city council to fire her, because the woman has got a brass set of ovaries that are to be envied. And so she came forward and she delivered again on this case, and in spite of them telling her, like, hey, don't come forward, to get this report, the Herculean efforts, you would think a simple open records request would get it. I mean, I had to, I mean, whatever, I'm a former city council member, I'm, I'm nobody, right? I'm nobody. But I went and went, yeah, from 2016 to 2020, I served a four-year sentence here, working for the city. And so, I mean, and I had to like, really dig, I finally got it, I finally got it. Something that should be, like, the public should be made aware of, like, hey, like, we're, we've identified a problem at the city cemetery, we're addressing it, we're being proactive, we're firing this guy. No, it was swept and swept and swept under the rug. And so, by the way, looking around at the faces here today, it's a very different ethics commission. There's like a little bitty ray of light kind of poking through, and, and so, you know, kudos to y'all for stepping forward, because it's a pretty thankless job. But anyway, I mention that because Ms. Ortiz is a unsung hero here at the City of Laredo. And so that, that being, that being said, I, I, I believe there is enough evidence for this case to go forward. I don't know if you've already made that determination or not. Okay, so I, I would submit to you that under tab three, if you, if you dig through, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, they're not, they're not numbered, but they're back to back, but if you got to page 8 and page 9 is the beginning of Zulema's report. This is the city's own internal HR report, and that you can pretty much read that there and very easily arrive at a conclusion that there's more than enough evidence to go forward for us to go and have our, our full hearing. But, you know, I'm just a suit, right? I mean, I'm a, you know, I get, I get, I get, this is my job, this is, this is what I do, right? I get to, I get to, you know, make my client's case, but the most, I think the most compelling information aside from Zulema's report would be for me to take a seat and for you all to please indulge Ms. Paredes. And what does this mean to a small business owner? Like, what does this mean to a teacher who, you know, several years into a meaningful career, she and her husband decide, you know what, let's, why don't you hang up your spurs there at LISD, and let's go into business together? Like, we can make a difference, so we can try, you know, we got kid, she's got, her daughter's graduating from, from, from St. Mary's, I mean, they got tuition bills, like, let's, let's give it a go, right? We're going to put all, we're going to put it all on red, and then to meet this brick wall of a city that's not open for business for everyone, it's only open for business for a certain few, right? And that's got to change at some point in time. I mean, this isn't Communist China, where you have to be a member of the, you know, their version of the patron party to get your foot in the door, like, you should just be able to hang a shingle, invest, and realize a return on your dream. And who better to plead that case than Ms. Paredes?
Good evening, for the record, my name is Amanda Sosa Paredes. Thank you for hearing this case today. I come here before you because we, I ended up filing, my husband and I, this ethics complaint towards David Paredes, who was the city's cemetery supervisor. He is related to my husband, my father-in-law and David Paredes were brothers. My father-in-law passed away, after that, we had no contact with them for several years, two years approximately. And we decided to open this monument business, I got out of teaching, and everything was fine at the beginning, and until we started noticing that our foundation, so before we set a monument, there has to be a cement foundation that the city cemetery places, they weren't being placed. We would, the, the families would come and say, you know what, Ms. Paredes, like, they're, what's happening with my foundation? Can you call the cemetery and find out why our foundations are not being placed? Everybody that has passed around us has gotten their foundation, except for us. So we would go out there, check it out, and yeah, they were all Laredo monuments, foundations that were being placed. So that's when we started noticing something was off. There was a point where during the investigation that John Orfila went to the cemetery, yeah, the city cemetery, and then we had gone in, we saw his truck there, we got out, you know, we didn't want to be on the cemetery grounds. At that time, we left and we find out, well, we started noticing that the cemetery workers, the groundskeepers were not able to talk to us, any of them. We would get off to look for a location of a plot, and they'd scatter, they'd scatter, like, we'd say hi, you know, buenos dias to the workers, like, they'd get their shovel, whatever they had, and just leave. So we noticed that was really strange, we didn't know what was happening, until later we find out that they were told to not speak to us, that they weren't allowed to speak to us at all. It went on for a few months that we couldn't even like, ask, get there and ask for help to locate a plot. We had to just figure it out on our own, which wasn't the case with Laredo monuments, they would always show up, and of course, it's David's sons that would go install, so they would go to their dad, and of course, their dad would show them where the plot was located, so they didn't have trouble, like, we were having trouble. Another thing that we started noticing was the customers coming in, and they were like, they'd open the door, and we'd greet them, and they're like, ustedes instalan en el city cemetery, and we're like, yes? Are you sure you all install at the city cemetery? Yes, we're authorized to install at the city cemetery, why? And they're like, no, it's because they're telling us that you all cannot install, that it's only Laredo Monument or Gloria, but Gloria's taking years to install, so for us to go across the street next to Birking, which they always referred as next to Birking. And it was like, family after family after family, we started noticing, you know, that this was happening too often, so we were like, we weren't telling the families anything, we just say, yes, we're able to install, like, they didn't need to know anything that was happening, you know? So yeah, we started noticing it was just becoming, you know, too, too often it was happening. So, I mean, it was just that we, we had to tell the families that, yes, we were able to install there. We didn't know what to do with the foundations, because of course, David was the one in charge there, so it's not like I could approach him and say, hey, what, what's happening with my foundations? And I reached out to Mr. Landin, I reached out to him, and I said, you know, I need help, you know, this and this is happening, I need you to help me, something has to be done about this. Had this man just played it fair, I think everything would have been fine, you know? But he started playing dirty, and that's when I noticed, and we, and it wasn't only with us, I, I want y'all to know for the record, my husband is friends with Gloria's monument, the son, and they get along well, we help them, they help us also during installations, whenever we need assistance. And he said that David would do the exact same thing to them. Since he's been here, he's like, we've always struggled, so, he's like, they don't put our foundations, yeah, either. So it was just something that wasn't only happening with us, it was with the other monument company as well. So I, Mr. Landin ended up saying he would take care of it, I did, you know, communicate with him, there's documentation, there's emails between us, and he was like, I'm going to take care of it, I'm going to take care of it, and it, time went on, and I'm like, nothing's happening, this continues to occur, we were waiting 120 days to get our foundations installed, and their families were getting, were waiting like, two weeks, and their foundations were stayed, like, somebody would pass away, they'd wait like, two weeks, and they had a foundation. And our families had to wait 120 days, four months, is what Ms. Gomez was telling all our families, that they had to wait four months. We also found out that there's a lot of work orders that were not submitted, our work orders that were not submitted, and those work orders are for the permits, so the family goes to the cemetery office, pays the permit, and then there's a work order that is done, that's created by the cemetery employees in the office, and all of those work orders were being stacked in an office. So basically, when he left the cemetery office, our foundations were placed within a week, two weeks tops, by Mr. Santo Segura, which I do want to commend Mr. Santo Segura, he is the cemetery superintendent. And I know he's been there for a while, but he wasn't, by the looks of it, he wasn't allowed to do his job appropriately, because David would take over the cemetery. So now that David is gone, he's working well, you know, fairly with everybody. Cemetery workers talk to us now, when we go, we get there, we'll buenos dias, you know, like we always do, and ask, you know, for just the location of the plots, very important, to lead us to it. So things have changed for the better now, but yes, it was just unfair that we had to continue. Mr. Landin at one point told me there was nothing, or that they, they were handling it, but he said, Amanda, we don't have enough evidence. And I said, how is that? I gave you everything I have, like, everything that we gave to you all, pretty much I turned into him, and he's like, just keep sending me, anything you have, keep sending me. And I said, this is so unfair, I told my husband, this is so unfair that we have to continue doing this, like, they should already look into the matter, we shouldn't have to be plain investigators and trying to get stuff for them, like, this is enough. So, I mean, it's disappointing that it had to come to this point, you know, where we had to hire an attorney and gather everything, all the evidence we had submitted towards. had to hire an attorney and gather everything, all the evidence we had submitted to our attorney when we had already given everything to Mr. Landin.
I'm sorry, yeah. If we could just wrap it up, it's been past the time.
Okay. I'm sorry. So yes, I just wanted to make you all aware of the issue at hand and why the ethics complaint was filed on our part. This was not a frivolous complaint at all. This was something serious that was happening, and hadn't, had he not been interfering, you know, with our company, we would not have been here. Thank you.
Move into executive session?
Can we ask a question, though, regarding, okay? So I just, Ms. Sosa, you had said something about Mr. Segura. I noticed in, attached in the documents that were provided to us, there was a statement that Mr. Segura, and this is what somebody else said about him, that he would look at all the bids and tell David, the respondent in the complaint, who and what the low bid was, and therefore, Laredo Monument was able to submit a lower bid. And there was also a statement that although he has since separated from the city, that this is continuing to happen. So is there any allegation that that is continuing to happen, that somebody is communicating through Mr. Segura about what bids are coming in?
No, not through Mr. Segura because there was a recent bid that Mr. Orfila's office sent out recently, not too long ago, and it was his secretary emailing me at the office saying, hey, can you quote us on this? And I said, I responded, and I said, this is obviously over the $50,000 threshold, like this should, you should not be getting informal quotes this way. I said, once it's up on the EBIT system, I will gladly, you know, bid, submit my bid. So, which is, the bid opened like the next day on the EBIT system. But it was not going through Santo Segura anymore. This one was John Orfila.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I second.
We will retire into executive session. The time is 6:21, and it will be pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, to receive counsel from the city attorney's office. Okay, if the record can reflect that we have returned from closed session, we are back in open session, and the time is 6:29. So is there a motion regarding the agenda item?
Yes, I motion to accept the complaint filed by Amanda Lizette Sosa Paredes and Luis Daniel Paredes and move forward to evidentiary hearing.
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and we will move forward with an evidentiary hearing at a date to be scheduled through the city attorney's office. I know there's some time constraint, so we'll, the city attorney's office will take care of that. Okay? All right. Is there any further business?
Just a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Hey, at 6:30, let the record reflect that we are ending.